We'll wait till the girlfriends get down. I'm just playing. We're gonna go ahead and get started tonight. This is a work session on Monday, February 29, 2016. It's 4:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. We're just gonna roll right downhill tonight. We do have a couple of Mayor's Awards that we will be giving out next week. We also have a public hearing, a consideration of sale of property locally known as 115 Golf Lane with conditions, City of Burlington, DeMoyne County, Iowa. Mr. Teslin.
Show a couple maps here, Stephanie. Works. So we're having sale of 115 Golf Lane at the upcoming council meeting. We acquired this property through the abandoned building program, the 657A. It had been vacant for a couple of years and we're doing nuisance abatements on the property. It was under, went back to a bank and they were not responsive. So ultimately, the city did take ownership and acquired the property. Did have an open house a couple of weekends ago and had a great turnout for that. So we do expect quite a bit of interest in the property. There is a property sheet in your folder, but just a little background on it. It is built in 1961, close to the golf course, 1,800 square feet home, 16,000 square foot lot. Two bedrooms with large closets, two bathrooms, three season rooms, screen and porch, and a two-car attached garage. There are some upgrades that are needed with it. The electrical service does need upgraded. Some HVAC is in poor condition, plumbing repairs as needed, wiring is needed. It is a home that hasn't really been updated since it was built in 1961. So some of the cosmetic stuff as needed by the purchaser, but we do expect quite a bit of interest in it. Looking at other properties in the area, talking to a realtor, would expect or staff would recommend at least $60,000 for a minimum sale price. If we didn't reach that, we'd probably recommend that we table it and maybe have another open house and get a little closer into spring, but we're hopeful that we do reach that mark, so.
Counsel, do you guys have any comments or thoughts on that?
Are we doing any other advertising for the date of sale? Like any other, putting the word out?
We do have on our Facebook, on our website, we did have two ads in the Hawkeye newspaper as well. So we do hope to get quite a few people there.
Sounds good.
Yeah, looks like a, looks like a pretty nice house. It could be a super-nice house after a little money was put into it, so.
It's a great location.
Yeah, you betcha.
Top-notch.
Any other comments on that? Are we good?
Good.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing, consideration of sale of property locally known as 300 Washington Street with conditions, City of Burlington, DeMoyne County. Mr. Teslin, any other?
This is the former Typewriter Building at the corner of Third and Washington. A four-story building. Has traded ownership a number of times. Again, the owner did deed this to the city. We have discussed with DPI and they've expressed willingness to purchase the building. One of the conditions that we had on the building was a $25,000 deposit for, to guarantee that roof work or repairs would be completed on the property. We have a resolution to be completed by November 1st with a 60-day extension, something we're willing to work with on someone that is actively seeking redevelopment and rehab of the property. It is in the Central Business District, as for anyone else interested, does qualify for the 10-year tax abatement program that was approved by council. Is on the National Register of Historic Places. There are some grant opportunities, historic and otherwise, for rehabilitation of the property. But it is one we did just acquire and do hope to sell very shortly, so.
On the 7th of March. That's coming up here pretty soon, so.
Is that the same date as the other one?
Yep.
Okay.
You guys have any other questions or concerns on that? Good. Okay. Next would be a public hearing, consideration of plans and specifications for the 2016 HMA resurfacing project. Steve?
Mayor and City Council, what we have is, on the, on the third is conducting the public hearing and approving the plans and specs for our annual HMA project, also known as the 3R, or the resurfacing, reconstruction, rehabilitation, and curb and ramp program. To illustrate what's in this, I think that one is three, isn't it?
It's one.
Is that one? Oh, you can't see the colors very well on it evidently. On this project, what we're doing is Haskell from West Avenue north to, north to the Seal Coat. This is gonna be a pavement, actually a new HMA overlay over the existing concrete. The next one, it's difficult to see on here, but you can see the one that says Haskell. The next one is, there's a little, it's yellow by Ironwood. It's from West Avenue to Williams. Again, this is actually concrete patching, there is no overlay, and some crack sealing that'll be done by the city. The third project is on Plain from West, from West Avenue to just north on your agenda. It says Amelia, but it's actually Athena. That should be red, you can't quite see that one, I don't think either, sorry. The next project is Amelia from Plain to Lebrick. Now, this one is in blue, thanks Eric. This one is, there's two projects on here that are actually subject to funding availability. So if the money comes in, the bids come in, like we hope, basically because of the price of oil, et cetera, this portion of that project will be done. But if not, there's this one and another one I got at the end that's, again, subject to availability. Let's try the next one, see if it reads any better, Eric, a little bit. We've got Court from Central to Eighth and from Fifth to Fourth, so it's kind of two areas there. And then the other one is 10th from Court to High. Again, this is concrete patching, no overlay, and crack sealing done by the city. See that up there? And then on the third sheet, this is another one that if money and funding's available, evidently blue shows up best in these things, boy, this keeps getting worse. Okay. This is Parkway from 14th to Madison. Again, this one's subject to funding availability. So the estimated budget for all this, including construction costs and engineering, is $506,092. Bids are to be received on March 23rd and a potential award on the March 4th, or April 4th council meeting. I will say this, if you have a lot of real detailed questions, I'll make sure Ryan's here next week. He's more tuned, but I can take those to him as well.
People would want to know how we decided to do these particular streets.
Basically, these streets right now have been kind of on the continuing five-year plan. We've just moved the previous year up and we're continuing to go with these. One of the things we've been implementing, but we've had some difficulty putting in, we've got a paver program. We're trying to go more and look at these a little bit more on a scientific where we can get the best bang for the buck, so to speak. And, but for these projects here, those basically are just a continuation of the previous five-year plan. Putting those that have been previously in there, moving them forward from last, you know, being two years out to this year. But I think we will hope to see more changes in the future as we get this paving program. And it's a street rating program where we can analyze the condition of the streets and put everything in a little broader detail to make these decisions. But unfortunately, that wasn't totally available at this point in time and these have been, basically, been moved up.
Counsel, do you have any other questions?
Good.
Anything else, Steve?
No. Do you wish to have Ryan here if there's any more details or anything next week? He's much more specifics with all the, I guess that'd be my only other question.
I wouldn't be a bad idea.
I agree.
All right.
I agree.
Not a problem.
The other thing that I did want them to do at some point, not this next week, but sometime this spring, is to bring forward their new five-year program so that you can take a look at where they're at.
That'd be great.
You had that last year, I suspect that a lot of it will be very similar, but we need to get the new one done.
True. Okay. Next, we have a consideration for permanent encroachment with the Art Guild. Encroaching into the right way in the alley, I think you said, right Eric?
Yeah, they're doing some renovation work at the Art Guild 301 Jefferson, looking to have access out the back side of the property on the alley with a stair coming from the property down to the alley to allow access or regress from that building.
Pretty straightforward questions?
Good.
Okay. Next, fiscal year budget, 2016, 2017.
Okay, next we have a public hearing, consideration of fiscal year 2016, 2017 budget.
Okay, I'll just start going through the slideshow that was included in your packet, just to go over. I guess I'll start with that, the budget was published in the Hawkeye last week as required by law. And then actually, the public hearing will be held next Monday, March 7th. So I will also go through this presentation next week too. So if there's any questions or additional information you need between now and then, just please let me know and I can include it. So this, the first page that we have up is just the comparison of revenue by fund. I'm just showing you what it was for FY '16 and what it is for '17. Everything is pretty much the same, except you see capital projects is much higher. That capital projects for next year includes the 5.8 million for that flood mitigation project that will be paid back with the sales tax increment funds. And then this is a report that comes out of our Open Gov that just shows it broken down by how, what type of revenues we're gonna receive in total for fiscal year '17. 36% approximately is gonna come from property tax, 22% from charges for services. Intergovernmental revenues is 20%. That includes the money we get from the state of Iowa such as the road use tax. The backfill that we receive goes there, any grants, our bus funding, which is about a half a million dollars, so. And then miscellaneous revenues make up 19%. And that number is high also because it includes all our other financing sources, which includes bonds. So majority of that is bonding we will do for the projects that we have budgeted, so.
Stephanie, that note you have at the bottom, it says excludes waterworks budgeted revenues?
Yes.
Is the waterworks budget included in our budget that we're presenting right here, right now, too?
Yes, it's, we're required to budget within the state document, the waterworks, but in Open Gov, we don't put any of the numbers. We just keep that strictly city-only. And then also in Open Gov are our internal service funds, property maintenance, vehicle maintenance, and safety. Those are not in the required state budget document. So, but we include them in our city information because they are divisions of the city. So that's why, when you pull reports out of there, it's really just what's happening in the city. That's why it doesn't tie exactly to the state of Iowa budget document.
Thank you.
So here, this is showing the expenditures by program. And this is how we budget, we budget required by Iowa code, that we budget by these different programs, public safety, public works, et cetera. So you can see, again, really, everything is pretty comparable from last year, except the capital projects, which again, is the same thing.
The other, one of the other main differences I just noticed in the community and economic development, what's driving that change?
Well, that would be the grant, the CDGB grant is there.
As well as some of the enterprise, or the payroll taxes?
Oh, yeah, our targeted jobs, yes, that's probably.
So those projects, as you look at that number, one of the big things that's happening there is, who all has that case?
Yeah, we have Federal Mogul, CNH, Wine Guard, Shears.
And so those are, you're seeing new projects being added on and we're starting to have to budget for those too. Those are a flow-through of funds that come from the state with some of the job creation efforts that each of those companies has been involved in over the last few years.
Yeah, and we budget those numbers a little bit higher because we're not exactly sure the timing of when we get those payments in.
We've missed this the last couple of years, being low. And hopefully, we're, well, I guess for their perspective, it would be nice if we were low again, but hopefully, we've gotten high enough this year that we're covering what will actually have come, flow through us.
Yeah. And basically, we receive the revenues and we turn it around and put it on the next claims and pay it back to the entities. So. Any other questions on these? This chart just shows it by the actual type of expense. And this is coming out of Open Gov, so again, it excludes waterworks, but does include our internal service funds. It's showing our personnel services, which is our payroll and benefits, is 34% of our budgeted expenditures. Contract services is 27%. Capital outlay is about 18%. Debt service is 13%. Just another way to look at how, what type of expenses we have. So here's just showing what we're proposing on our property tax rate, which is the same as last year with no increase. This gives you the history back to 2009. And then I know we've always kind of shown this calculation. This is showing if you have assessed value, taxable value of $100,000 for a residential home, what you'd be paying for taxes. It actually showing a slight decrease this year because the rollback amount is decreasing. But then the tax rate is staying the same. Again, the assessed value could have changed from the previous year, so residents have to take that into consideration too. But as far as our property tax rate staying the same, it is a slight decrease what they will pay based on the rollback. Commercial will be exactly the same as what they paid last year, based on this assessed taxable value of 200,000. There was no change in rollback, it's set at that 90% now, and then the tax rate did not change. This is just a comparison of showing all the Iowa cities with populations over 20,000, where we line up on our levy value. This is comparing last year's levy values, which of course, ours is gonna stay the same. And I think Jim showed this earlier in the budget process too. You have anything you want to add or any questions?
No, again, you see that we come out a little over a dollar higher than the average for the 20, these 22 communities. If you look at just the towns, populations in the 20,000s, our smaller subset, we're right in the center. And I know that, you saw that at the beginning of the budget season and it'll be in the, I think that's in the budget book too.
Yes. So we'll just kind of go over some of the factors that are impacting the budget. Our taxable valuation, overall, it went up just 1.13%. It went up the 4.75 in our TIF taxable valuation and just our regular just went up .73.
It's a lot higher than last year. Last year was .6, so now we're at .7.
What?
That's not enough to fund, I mean, it's not enough to keep up with any sort of escalation in costs. And when you assume that your general fund is 80% employee costs, those costs are not staying at that .6 or .7% increases annually. So we're, that does represent us falling behind in that given area.
This just shows the recap of the property taxes that will, you know, we should collect for '17 compared to '16 is an increase of 95,000 approximately. So affecting the budget is our health insurance premiums, of course. We have, we're projected to increase 7.9%. We do have it in this budget at 5%. We will just be using reserves to absorb the difference in that budgeted number. This shows you the IPRs rates, that's unchanged on the employer side, and the police and fire pension. It is decreasing to that 25.92% in this next fiscal year. Here's a chart that's showing just general fund revenues here. What makes up the, it's approximately $12 million we have in revenues. 54% of that is property tax we're collecting. Hotel motel goes into the general fund and then we transfer it out. And then charges for services, which the majority, a large part of that number is our ambulance revenues there. And intergovernmental are the grants and state funds we receive, a lot of that transit. Miscellaneous does show an increase of that 108,000. That's mostly revenues budgeted for venue works. I think it's increased a little bit and all those concessions and revenues get categorized in that miscellaneous. And this slide is showing the general fund expenditures. I, there is a typo on the one in the packet. The first column is the FY '17 budget and the second one is FY '16. That did not get changed, I will get that changed, so next week it's correct. I have it corrected here up on the screen, so. But this just shows the breakdown out of our general fund. 30% is going to police, 26 fire, and then from then it, you can see all the different expenditures. Any questions in the general funds or? So sewer fund, we've proposed a 3% increase in the user fees as of 7-1. And I think same explanation, it's, we'd increase in operating cost and then we have to keep financing the debt service requirements to comply with the PA sewer separation.
I did have a question back on those two.
Okay.
This, this general fund year revenues is a little over 12 million versus the expenditures at 18. What's the difference between those two?
Well, what happens is we transfer in funds from local option sales tax.
So you're not showing those transfers. So as people are looking at that, we do have essentially a balanced budget. There's a little bit of growth in the actual cash balance for the general fund, but you're not seeing it in that comparison.
How often are those transfers made, Steve?
We transfer twice a year, December and June. So you've got local option sales tax gets transferred into this, you have your employee benefits levy. That's another, it's a separate fund that the revenues go into, but then get transferred in to the general fund. Any other ones I'm missing?
Sewer, you have a transfer that comes in from the sewer fund, from sanitation. Don's not here.
Solid waste.
Solid waste. I think, you see, you see a little bit from vehicle maintenance and property maintenance as well. And that's trying to get a little bit of reimbursement for overheads.
Road use tax too.
And road use.
Yeah. Any question on the sewer fund here? Solid waste, we are also, it's projected to increase a quarter, 25 cents. So the fee will go to 1375 per month from 1350. And this is based on the landfill tipping fees increasing a dollar per ton and also the waste management fee has increased 10 cents, which all of that is included in that 1375. Here, I've just listed our capital projects that we have budgeted for the fiscal year '15. Just showing an overview of the items that we have budgeted. Any questions on any of those?
Well, I wish we kind of had a better, you got trails for 828,150. I wish kind of we had a better break down of that on regards to actually what the...
Okay, yeah, in the budget document, they're actually show that, it'll show the sources of how that's being paid for. These are just the expenditures in the capital projects funds. We do have those reports. I couldn't see if, I was, I thought Annette had them out under Open Gov, our capital projects, so you can pull those up and actually see the capital projects and how it's funded. Yeah, because a lot of that, it's not, we're not paying 828,000. I can show some of those reports in this presentation next time.
I just want to make sure that I've got, I really need to make sure that I've got that, so I can get that from.
Oh, sure.
I can just take care of that tomorrow myself.
Okay, sure, I can get that to you.
Is that the same one you have budgeted that we're doing the federal application on here in this agenda? And that has the cost breakdown, the revenue sources breakdown in it? So if, as we go through the packet, you'll get to where you have a breakdown of this project.
Hotel motel tax, we've budgeted the $800,000 and we have a split with the city gets 70% and the convention and visitors bureau gets 30% up to that 700,000 and then the split goes 60-40. So we've budgeted expenditures for 771,195. And then this is just a list by activity, what makes up that expenditure amount. You see CVB is estimated to get 250,000 or budgeted to get that. And then the rest of the items where the expenses are going. Special projects is the one that has a larger amount that we budget expenses out of there. You can see, does it may have any questions on all of these? I know we've kind of gone over them on the individual budgets, but this is just the recap.
As you approve this, you're kind of approving your breakdown of how hotel motel does get spent. We typically, you see a breakdown here by budget category, that dollar amount. What's going into the special revenue area, what's going to the auditorium, et cetera. I think in the past, you used, there was a point where we were doing a separate resolution that we set these. This is essentially what, where you kind of set that same type of priority of how you're gonna allocate those out. I don't know if that's something that is, yet this year, if you want to do what used to be done. I haven't even talked to Stephanie about this, but we used to have a resolution where we, where we did, had a formal authorization of how we were gonna distribute it between the different sub-accounts. But we'd be recommending if that's something that you want to see us do, that separate resolution we can, but it would be by the breakdown that she's just shown up here on the overhead.
To me, whatever's going to get that message across most of the public, then I'm good with it. I don't know what.
This hasn't come up as an issue, it's just we've changed informally how we do it. From when I look back a decade ago and see how it was being done, it's, I don't know if it really makes a difference outside of that, it's just another more formal way of showing your, how you're dispersing those hotel motel tax funds. It doesn't matter for us, it's just if you feel like it would be good for clarification, we can do that.
I was leaning toward that way, but I could go either way. I'll leave it to the council, I'm satisfied.
And we may, and I may push it depending as, if I go back and look at how things are supposed to be done. But we won't, we won't unless we, I look at it and decide that I think that maybe we should be doing that.
Sounds good.
Some of that depends too on the public's understanding of what's being done. If we have to go to more detail, we have to go into more detail. Public's the one that needs to know. I think we've got an idea.
Yeah.
Communicating that idea is what's the most important.
Okay.
Sorry to interject in the center of a meeting and presentation.
That's okay.
Thanks for interjecting in the center of a meeting, Jim.
So we'll go over the sales tax fund. We have budgeted 4.2 million here, which is an increase of, from fiscal year '16 of 206,168. And we have budgeted expenditures of the 4.1 million, 91,873. So here's just a list of where we have budgeted those amounts from the sales tax. Majority of it's going for property tax relief. So this is what Jim was showing, that 2.6 million gets transferred into that general fund. Well, in fact, the first three items there all go back into the general fund because the other two items are for the police department, so.
Jim, can you clarify for people, the money that's gonna be coming to us for the flood wall? Jim, can you clarify for people, the, the money that's gonna be coming to us for the flood wall has nothing whatsoever to do with this local option sales tax, is that correct?
It's a separate, it's a separate funding source. Though our local option sales tax is our penny that's, that's collected. The, uh, the flood sales tax is state funds and what the state did was they authorized that out of the, for those communities that end up being provided funding through this funding stream. What they do is they look at the sales tax that's collected for the state's five cents and look at the growth in that and they, we can use up to 70% of the growth moving forward. So this is out of this, this, the state's sales tax collections that, that we're gonna fund the flood wall work. It doesn't have any impact at all on our local option sales tax.
Thank you.
So this is just a continued list of the projects that are being budgeted out of local option sales tax. And again, most of these we went over when, when people did their detailed presentations. So I included a chart here showing our existing account deficits. You can see back in 13, we had 2.7 million and each year since then you can see it decreasing. We're budgeted for FY 17 to fund 340,000 of transfers from the general fund to help out these deficit accounts. And by FY 20, we should be done funding those deficit accounts.
Yes. Yes.
Any questions on this showing it?
Can you make FY 20 come here a little bit quicker, Steph?
It'll be here soon enough.
All right.
And then I also included a schedule of the legal debt margin. So you could see, um, 15, again, we ended at that 66.92%. So we're under this 70%, which is where we wanna be. And then projected 16 and 17 are both showing under that 70% where we wanna, where we wanna be. And this includes all the projects budgeted to bond.
So I think you have like one, one year's worth of the sales tax for flood protection capital project being shown in there.
Yep, and 17. That's all I had.
Council, do you guys have any questions or comments for Steph?
Jim, on the, uh, the health insurance.
Yes.
Projecting is, we've been told we're gonna have a 7.9% increase. We've budgeted a 5%. But I, I thought that because of the way that our contracts were, we budgeted 5% and the, the, the unions come back to the table and we look at how we can adjust the plan to cover that 2.9%.
The way the contract was written back in 2008 or 9 or whenever that was, it set a floor or a base year, uh, what the cost of the single, um, medical insurance was. And that was a combination of dental health and the reserve amount. It set that for both single and family. And the contract had that, had a mechanism in it for those base values inflating by 5% a year to be a cap. We, we were coming into this, this, going into this, uh, new, uh, the health insurance increase that will take place this July 1. We were bringing in from last year, our rates were a little below where those cap amounts were. So as we inflated, uh, 5% from last year's cap to the current year's cap and then looked at where these rates are gonna be, they'll be just under it. So there, we were about 3% under the caps. And when you, the caps are where if we end up going over those annual cap increases, that's where they're based on our current contract language. We had to go into a discussion with the unions to see if they had a desire to pick up a portion of the costs or look for plan design changes. As long as we're staying under the cap, we don't have to do that. It's nice that we're gonna be under that cap for going into this next year, given that two of the, well, I guess three of our four bargaining units, um, have not settled yet and we don't have, uh, anything in place that says whether that 5% cap language will actually move forward into the new, new contracts or not. Guess what I'm saying is, is that not having those settled isn't gonna make an issue in terms of how do we proceed right now with our health insurance plans? Cause we, there's nothing in, even if it was just in place with all the unions, we don't, there's nothing that would kick in a requirement for us to make plan design changes. Was that too complicated? I'm sorry?
I, I understand, fine, I, I don't know if the public will. Maybe if you can show next week.
We can have a, we have a table that we've used to show where the 5% increases have gone from 2009 up through 2017 and we can show how those inflated out and put, I think you have the actual rates for those years as well. And that, maybe that'll help to show where this, these, the new rates coming into this July 1 will be in respect to what those caps are.
That'd be great.
Is that kinda?
Yeah, that's what I want, I'm still, I'm a little confused on some of the language you're using about the inflation and the, and, you know, and how, does, does that, when you're saying inflated cost and increases, are those one, are those two in the same?
Well, let's just say if, for example, and you'll have it next, we can have it for next week, but if the single insurance was $200 in the base year, uh, the second year it would've been 210. The, the third year it would've been 220 and 10 cents or something like that, or 221, I don't know, I'm not doing that well. Um, and then 230 and some change. And we'd have gotten up to where the rates now were, um, in the 270 range, 280 range, something like that. We could've had, with the way the contract was written, we could've had, uh, flat premiums on health insurance in the intervening years and stayed at $200 every year. And going into this next year had a 40% rate increase and gone up to that $280 cap. And we'd have still been, the way the contract language was written, we kept un- would've kept under the, of annual average 5% increase. That's what the contract language envisions is an annual average 5% increase in insurance. So we've had years where we've been over it, years where we've been under it. Last year, were we just a little under, about 4%? So, and I don't, we must've had a little bit of a balance going into that, that year as well, so. But we can, we can show those numbers and how they worked.
I've, uh, that's extremely important to a lot of the folks I've been talking with.
Well, the nice thing is, is, I mean, I, I understand there's lots of discussions about how our health insurance and how the program's set up. We have, as, as a organization, seen average cost increases of 5% since 2009. We've actually been able to budget for an average increase of 5% on an annual basis and know that that's what it's gonna be because of that cap language. Any, anything that was gonna be, if the plan was gonna cost more than that, all the, the risk was on the employees or the, but also the control over deciding, are they gonna pick up a portion of costs? Are they gonna make plan design choices? So they had the ability to choose and make a decision, how do we wanna manage our health insurance costs given that the city isn't gonna put in more than a 5% increase? Most places don't have a design like that, but it's, it's been a, a different, we have a very unique relationship. And we'll see whether that continues as time moves on or not.
From a government entity.
From a government entity. And, and that's one of the hardest parts for people to understand. The way that wages and benefits are negotiated by state statute, by state codes, requires that we have a certain process that we go through and certain comparabilities that we use when we make justifications for why we see changes. And we also have to, we don't just get to make wholesale changes, we have to make sure that we do it through the channels that are prescribed from the state. It's different than the private sector. If people would like to see that different, they would strongly encourage folks with that viewpoint. You need to speak with your legislatures to see a change in state statutes occur.
Yeah, there's, there's options for local governments too. Save those for discussion next week.
There is, are you finished, Mr. Scott?
Yes.
There's one other, uh, at the time when this was presented, I should've said something and I, for some reason it went by me, but in the sewer streets department, and I don't wanna talk about individual line items very much, but this vineyard area drainage thing for 307,000 dollars just seems really questionable to me. And so when that does come up, I'm, I, I would like to have a discussion about whether we're, whether that's the best way to do this.
Touche.
This is something that I've talked with staff about, that, uh, we're gonna, when, whenever this discussion does come up, we're gonna have to have a presentation in regards to what they're proposing for work to be done. What it does accomplish and what it does not accomplish. And lets you have some decisions about, do you wanna actually do this work? Do you wanna do less, do you wanna do more? It's an area where as we get into flat areas like this, this is not the, the only spot where we have drainage issues like this. If you're gonna look at doing some of this work and we talk about our ongoing sewer projects that we have to do, this, we can, we can somehow fit one in, but we start ha- this starts to have the potential, if you start doing this around the community, we'll have trouble being able to, to afford it without doing a change to what we've talked about for, uh, being able to work with gradual rate incre- in quotes, gradual rate increases at 3% annually.
And I, I think that would be important if we could have some idea of how many potentially there would be in the community that, of like situations that, that would certainly impact what we'd have to decide.
And also other options that, that can be explored on that too, to know what the other options may be available to us. I think that would be fantastic as well.
A third of a million dollars seems like a lot. One shot, but, but anyway.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
That's all I have.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay, any other questions for Mrs. Steph? Okay, thank you very much, Steph, appreciate you. Uh, we'll just keep rolling then. Um, next we have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of alley right of way located south of 1325 Iowa Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Teslin?
Uh, no changes on this, this was the portion of alley directly behind 1325 Iowa. Able to expand garage and or parking area for the resident there.
Nothing that came up on your end?
No.
Do you guys have any problems with that?
You willing to waive?
I am. You guys? I guess I haven't heard anything to say any different. Let's do that. Okay. Okay, number eight. Uh, that is a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South 14th Street right of way located adjacent to 1800, 1802 and 1804, South 15th Street and adjacent to 1408 here, Harrison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Teslin, any, uh?
This is the one, the, uh, the resident at 1408 who's purchasing the property on contract from Wally Day, who's the owner, uh, did not have a desire to take ownership of that portion shown in yellow on the map on the screen. Uh, the other owners, uh, do have, uh, desire to take ownership of that right of way. It was discussed by the planning commission that, um, would see or could see the, vacating out all of it except for the portion in yellow since that is on the end there and leaving that as, remaining as public right of way.
So basically, he's not gonna get what he was looking for, uh, the gentleman that owns the house.
He's not getting ownership to the property, he's not taking responsibility to it either, if, if this is the direction you wanna go. We'd have to amend the ordinance to take that portion out.
Yeah, you have to, yeah. We don't have to start the process over though, correct? I mean, we approved it once, but we can go to the second reading and amend it and still be legal.
Yeah, yeah, it's just taking that description out and moving forward with the vacation if that's what you.
The question is, do you feel that's a good policy or not?
That's a good question.
I, I can't think, I think, I think we're, personally, I think we're ripping off the people that live there. We're gonna charge them $500 to do the same thing that they've been doing. Their property taxes are gonna increase because of the value of the property is going to increase, but there's gonna be no increased value to the property. They're gonna, they're gonna take on, uh, responsibility that adjoining property owners are supposed to have anyway. I just, I think it's.
But, but if, if they wanted, if they want to do it, then that should be up to them, right?
Well, I, I, I think, I really don't think they understand the process or don't understand what they're getting. They're not, they're getting a piece of property that they can do absolutely nothing with.
Not unless we make it out.
And, and I think when the time, when the time comes and one of those sewers collapsed on the other side of the street and they've gotta dig into that property and those people have to go get special permission from the homeowner and probably, uh, could very well have to take it to court to get that permission. I just, I, I think, we're going to encapsulate that, that sewer and the city's gonna have an okay with being able to get to it.
With the easement.
But when you, if you've gotta go across that property that's gonna be considered private property, it's, I think it's gonna become an issue for, for anybody that might live on the opposite side of 14th Street.
So.
And it, and it, it's not a matter of will it happen, it's a matter of when it'll happen.
So, so to this point, where do you stand on that then, what would you, what would you?
I, I just think it's a bad idea altogether. There's, there, it's, it's, uh, there's no advantage to the property owner. There's really no advantage to us, uh, other than, you know, we're gonna get a couple of thousand dollars out of it.
Is that right Eric, each property owner is gonna?
No, the entire portion 500, so 125 per property owner.
So the whole thing is $500, so each property owner is only like a fourth of that.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
We're gonna each pay?
125, it was.
125, 125.
Yeah.
Even if it's a buck.
Yeah.
It's too much for.
I, I understand what you're saying. Eric, did you say that they, they would be entitled to build, put up a, a utility shed or something like that on?
Not on the, on the easement area.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, the part that's not the alley currently, I mean.
There's an easement over the entire portion.
Over the entire portion.
Yeah.
So they can, yeah.
Did they know that when they, I mean, they were the ones who asked?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think they thought.
Was there any more discussion with the planning commission? This all came forward by the o- property owners, this wasn't something staff requested and they're the ones that particularly at, uh...
They were under the impression that they were gonna be able to shut that off, that end off of that, they were gonna be able to put a fence up and utilize that.
Not that I'm aware of, yeah, yeah.
Brian, Brian's shaking his head back there. Chris is shaking his head.
Who, what, Brian Brons, who's shaking their head?
So.
Troublemaker.
We did have the property owners come to our first, uh, planning commission meeting discussing that. That'd be 1800, 1802, 1804. And they were aware that they're not gonna be able to build anything on that right of way. It has to remain clear for Alliant and for us. I spoke with the owner of 1408, Wally Day, who said he was okay with it, but that was not the person living there. And the person living there thought they would be able to build something in that alley. So they are aware that they won't be able to build anything in that area and it's a good point that they're not gaining really very much. But they, they were okay with that and they were aware of what they were getting.
And they were still wanting to go through with it?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
It'd be all right till the first time they called and say we got, we've got, uh, we've got potholes in our alley and we need to, uh, get it greeted.
Brian Brons, 1703 Group Street, um, sit on the plan commission. Uh, the, I, I think, and I'm not speaking for the plan commission, I would give you some thoughts here and I, I hear what you're saying. And it's, boggles my mind how this ever occurred to begin with. But they came to us, um, and it seems like a good idea if they want. But they came to us, um, and it seems like a good idea if they want it, we're returning something back to the tax rolls. They wanted to have something on their, in their name. So, um, I understand where you're coming from. There's still easement there. So, I mean, I think, I think that was kind of our discussion in the last meeting is, look, this is an opportunity to return, return something back to the tax rolls and not have the city involved with it. So that's, that's all I could probably add.
Did I understand this right? Is this the way it was explained, Charlie or Brian or Eric? We vacate this, they can, uh, tear up that alley and plant grass there and they can have a, a grassy lawn?
That wasn't my understanding.
No.
No, there's a.
It's leave as is current.
There's a fifteen foot wide.
There's still an easement.
Access easement over that roadway.
They, they wouldn't be able to block that alley.
No, but I mean, it, does it have to stay a gravelled alley is my question.
There's still.
Alliant, so that they'd be able to work on it and it was grass and so would our department if you look to the north, that's grass up there and we have a sewer in that grassy area, so it would still be.
Can, can I have a check?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
So it could go to grass. There's still be the easement on it so that people can work on the utilities there, but it doesn't have to be maintained as gravel.
Okay.
Okay, see, I thought we had something where, where there was an easement that, uh, that there would have to be gravel. I thought if cars were going to, I had that wrong. It just depends on the situation, I guess.
They're, they're gonna, I mean, they, they're taking over private ownership of it. If they end up not gravelling it, they're gonna end up with essentially a muddy, potentially muddy mess and we're not gonna maintain it. That's gonna be their issue on their land. So that's really up to them to, how well are they gonna maintain their, essentially a private drive?
Yeah. The.
It is, I, I don't, I can't imagine them putting grass over it because there are garages off that alley on each one of those houses.
That they'll wanna have access to.
There, there is one garage which currently only has access from the alley and the owner is building a new garage with access off Fifteenth Street. The, the garage at eighteen hundred, South Fifteenth, the owner owns the property right next to it and he has access off Fifteenth Street and what looks like a garage at eighteen oh two is actually just a utility shed.
Okay, well.
I don't know, but something they want and they understand it.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Charlie.
Is, is everybody satisfied with that somewhat?
If they want to do it, I'm happy to let them do it.
Yeah, if they're, if they have a good understanding of what it is and it seems like they do, I mean.
But I understand what you're saying.
I don't see the.
Yeah.
Well, they can't, they can't put gravel from Fifteenth Street to the back. It's gonna have to be a hard dust-free surface. If that, if they grass that over and they decide they want to put it back, it's gonna have to be a hard dust-free surface.
I can't even see them grassing it over though. I don't understand.
I don't think they would.
All right.
I guess that's be up to them.
Yeah, yeah. Obviously, they've got, they've got greater plans or plans that they're satisfied with. Do you guys have anything else to wrestle around with this on or?
No, I'm.
Other, other than that they're parking on the grass now and that, it between the, the alley and the street.
Yeah, they have that.
Which is, which is not legal. I don't, that, that's still not gonna be legal without it being a hard dust-free surface according to our code.
So you're saying we need to make sure we make that perfectly clear on, on this deal? Is that what you're getting at?
It's such a unique situation.
It is. It, it really is.
Okay.
Yeah, I was about to say, well, let's, let's move forward tonight. And Carlos, I know you're watching. I will have a conversation with you, uh, later on tonight. Uh, next, we have a resolution approving the application for a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant, the SAFER grant. Chief? You got it already, right?
Yep, you should have it, but you probably wonder, why am I bringing a resolution to you that I didn't do it last time? Well, you tell you, that's the number one reason. I did learn something the last time I did a SAFER grant. That is, at least let you know ahead of time what I'm doing. So, uh, that's one reason. The other reason is we were gonna hire a grant writer, but we actually found a good consultant that wrote a SAFER grant where they got a grant the second time around, which is not usual. A lot of people don't get them a second time around. So she recommended that we go ahead and get council resolution that approving us to apply for it and saying that, you know, whether you intend to or promise to, and we put the words intend to seek funding if we were to get the grant at the end to continue the, the three positions. Because they don't want us to just say, you know, we're gonna, we're expecting you to pay for three years or two years and then we're just gonna let these people go. That's not what the SAFER grant's for, so get people through rough patches. Uh, in our last grant, if you read through the, the financial part, we outlined all the cities, the five-year plan. They were trying to reduce our deficit, deficit funds in five years to a zero balance. Uh, what was that, our fifteen percent cash reserve? I think in this, uh, this application, you'll see us say, we didn't make it. I mean, it hasn't been five years, but we are making progress towards that. And I think the number two on there is probably if you, if you read all this application, that'd be the one to be like, ooh, I, you know, I don't know about that. It says, uh, you know, if we were awarded the funding, the Burlington City Council intends to seek long-term permanent funding for these positions when the grant period ends. So that's not saying we promised to and I won't come back if we would get the award and then when it's over say, you promised that you would do this. I, I mean, I promised you I wouldn't do that. So that's why the, that's why we settled on the word intends. So we're hopeful that with that and we got a really good, uh, consultant. She gave me a lot of good advice. She actually said, don't pay for, for somebody to write the grant. She gave me a grant that she wrote. And she's a professional grant writer in California. She only wrote the one grant because her husband was a firefighter at this department. So she said, you write the grant, here's what you need to put in there. When you're done, send it to me. I'll review it for you.
Sweet.
So I think when we write them ourselves, they have a little bit more of a personal touch to them, so it takes a lot of work. But we did the AFG grant, just got done with that. So a lot of the stuff is a repeat, like call volumes and budgets and stuff like that. We don't have to do the research over again.
I was very concerned about the language on the, on the, uh, intends. Um, trying to find the right wording in there that, uh, says that you'll seek funding or long-term funding to, for it. I don't see a guar- any way that you can make a guarantee that you can commit to funding those positions beyond that. If you notice from the size of the grant application, over the next two years, uh, that's close to three hundred thou- two hundred and eighty thousand annually. Making that work in the budget, uh, we couldn't do that now. Two years from now, I don't know how we will be able to. I don't know, maybe we'll find that we have significant property growth and, or something else comes up that makes it happen. But, and, and you can have that as something that you look to see, is there a way to do it? But I, I would not want you to do anything that had you in, committing to it, 'cause we just don't have the funds to do it.
Yeah. On our side, there's a couple of positives. I mean, every year where the ambulance revenue is going up and also with one added person per shift, our overtime costs were way down the last year. So that's some, that is a positive that we could consider. Not this year, but that's, we have three people going to school, which really is hurting us. But that dollar amount, that's the Matt Trexel Fire Chief figure, five hundred and sixty-five thousand a net. The accountant did it.
What, what figure was that?
That was the Fire Chief Matt Trexel figure. I figured and added in what I thought should be. A net did it, five sixty-seven. So, hey, it was two thousand dollars off. I thought it was pretty good for a fire chief. So she added in a little, she, I'm not gonna say worst case scenario, but I don't remember the percentages, but like ten percent per year or something, just to make sure we didn't underestimate the cost, so.
Lot of work, it looks like. Thank you.
We appreciate the work you put in. Sure appreciate it.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, we have a resolution adopting the non-union employee classification and compensation study. This is Stucker.
This is, um, the final report that came, that's coming from Gov. HR. So that was, we included it in your packet. You had lots of nice, long things to read, didn't you? So this is just a formal resolution approving it. So if anybody had any questions from when Jo Ellen was here presenting it, um.
It's essentially unchanged from.
Yes, we, we had one position that we did adjust. Um, the civil engineering positions were adjusted. Um, but other than that, no. Um, on page twenty-seven, the proposed pay ranges, which is table three, I did request that they add in the midpoints to that table. So I, I hope to get that to be in the packet next time when you formally approve it. Why that's important is that's how we calculate with the transition table, so I'd like it to be in here. So, and they said they would do it. It just didn't get in this final report yet, so. Any questions? Are we good?
You guys good?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't have any questions. I do have concerns with the way that the resolution's written.
Oh, okay.
Is this saying we're adopting this as part of the non-union employee manual? Or, uh, are we just accepting the study?
Yeah, how I envision it, you guys will accept the study and then I will use this pay range to be in the non-union personnel manual, which we'll come back to you in the next month or two.
Yeah, that's the way I want it to happen.
Okay, yes.
Because there's, there's, there's other parts of this that need to be included in that, that have to have some council discussion, council and staff discussion before it's put in there. I don't, I don't, uh, I don't like the terminology adopting. I, I think it's, I, I think the resolution accepting.
Okay.
The, 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 uh, non-union employee classification and compensation study is the right language and then we'll.
Okay.
We'll adopt it when we, when we do the, uh, non-union employee manual.
I can make that change.
That make sense?
Point taken, yep.
Yeah.
Very good, Mr. Scott.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Your honor, do we have to quit because the other board is here or they're just gonna wait?
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. They just have to move. I was about to say, we're unpropose. We're, we're downhill. We won't be long.
I'm, I'm kidding.
Hold on, Chris. Hold on, brother. Okay. All right, let's get a propose, get some agenda. Uh, resolution approving, uh, refund liquor, uh, license. Taxi cabs. Where am I at here? Uh, number three, resolution establishing a no parking zone on the north side of Luiza Street extending from Madison Avenue to the east approximately fifty feet. Mr. Teslin?
Need discussion or is it understood?
Oh, okay.
I understand it, but maybe you should explain why.
Yeah, can you give us a quick, uh, for those that are watching?
Essentially, we were approached by a citizen in the area having concerns and, uh, this map kinda shows what we're talking about. If it comes up, Eric. There it is. Roughly that fifty feet there, uh, that last fifty feet on the north side of, uh, Luiza there. We're looking just to post it as no parking. There's a, it's not gonna be a major expense. There's already existing bike route sign there, so. Uh, there's other pictures, but it, when you put two cars there, it's very difficult. The other side of the road is already no parking and it just makes it difficult when you're trying to get up there when there's two more cars parked there and get that close, so. It's been a, uh, Chris and I both looked at it and felt it was a good idea and made a lot of sense and we're recommending you approve it.
I didn't have any problem with it. Counsel?
I'm good.
You guys good?
Good.
Is there any commercial property on those, any of those corners there?
I don't think so.
How you go down there and look at it?
No. I think the jet stop is up there at the, at the next block.
You good? Okay, next is a resolution changing the name of a portion of Messiah Drive to Lavender Lane. Mr. Teslin?
When Messiah was originally planted, it, uh, that it ended in Cambridge Drive. Uh, since that time Lavender Lane was constructed and, um, I guess, after they're going through and accepting the street for Lavender Lane and putting up street signs realized, uh, to the west of Lavender Lane or to the east of Lavender Lane still remained Messiah Drive, Messiah came down and then curved to the west. Our street names should line up across the street from each other, so, and there's no houses on that portion. So we're looking to rename, uh, this small stub of Messiah to Lavender Lane so that, uh, the streets line up and, uh, the street signs can be appropriate in that area, so.
Any problems with that?
No.
Excellent.
Good. Next, a resolution approving agreement with the highway department of transportation for a state recreational trails project completing a portion of the Flint River Trail.
This, I think, partly what you may have been talking about before, this, uh, city did receive a, a grant, um, state rec trails grant. Show a map here again to complete a phase one south, uh, portion of the Flint River Trail. Which is the portion from the ramp behind Big Muddy's, uh, coming up to Front Street, up to Oak Street, uh, behind the barrier wall. Uh, phase one is the last remaining portion of the Flint River Trail to be constructed. That'll link it up to the, um, levy behind Case and then eventually up to the county portion that'll link on Mill Dam Road. In your, uh, packet there, uh, lists the, the grant amounts. Um, the state rec trail grant, uh, is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, we did receive, uh, refunding and two REAP grants in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars total. Uh, Stephanie had shown, uh, ninety-four thousand, one hundred and fifteen local sales tax and thirty thousand, five hundred in outside funds. But part of the contract award does require a resolution authorizing the signature of that grant and, uh, that's what's being brought forward to you today, uh, to complete this portion of the trail.
Okay.
Counsel?
No.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, next we have, uh, some. Did I just skip over? Uh, next we have some, uh, dates for public hearings. Uh, we have two, four of those. Uh, one is consideration of plans and specifications. Somebody just, uh, let me read through them and stop me if you need to. Uh, the one is consideration of plans and specifications for the two thousand sixteen Seal Cove Street Reconstruction Project. Uh, the second is a consideration of an amendment, uh, to ordinance number thirty-three fifty-one, Westbrook Meadows Plan Unit Development by adding Outlet A to the provisions of the PUD. Uh, C is a consideration of an ordinance residing in the property located west of Garden Avenue, Lawn Avenue and Dill Street from R-one single-family residential to R-two single-family trans- transitional residential zoning district with a planned unit development, uh, Southern Cross PUD overlay zone. And D is a consideration of a resolution approving Burlington two thousand sixteen general obligation pre-levy for fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen budget. Is there?
That, that last one, we do have Travis Squires here. So I'm sorry I interrupted you. You were gonna ask if anyone wanted discussion on those.
Did anybody have any discussion on this before we called Travis? Okay, Larry Williams said no. We cleared out the, the big, the big herd. Uh, Travis, would you like to come forward and?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So, should be relatively quick here. Travis Squires at Piper Jaffrey in Des Moines. Just gonna take a real quick moment to walk through, uh, the upcoming CIP plan. And this is kind of the, uh, I guess I would say the fruit of, you know, five years ago as we looked at the debt structure of the city and realizing that, you know, each year the council should have some input and structure and some understanding on how does this lay out with your five-year CIP plan. So I just, coming before you, giving you the chance to, to ask any questions about the debt structure. Real quick on, uh, just a, a few things on valuation history, um, which is the, kinda the next page after the, uh, outline of what we're gonna walk through. The, one of the things that, uh, kind of as a result of your last meeting, Jim and I did some more talk after, you know, looking at the TIF, where it stands currently, your existing obligation. So we did look at some calculations as to, you know, if, if the city were to look at changing the amount of TIF that you're claiming, what kind of impact that would have on the general fund. So I just wanted to give you that overview that we've had some. So I just wanted to give you that overview that we've had some of those preliminary conversations, but nothing obviously with this budget. That's already set. You had to certify your TIF obligations back in December. But perhaps something that we look at later this fall. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Jim?
I wasn't listening to you.
Okay. Perfect. I'm used to that, so, no. I was just saying that, that we had some conversations about what a release of the TIF would look like. As far as, as you'll note, if you kind of look at this bottom table, there's, there's different valuations that really are, are key to the city. So the first one where we say actual valuation, this would be your total assessed property value. So if you look at the ten-year average, that's at about two percent over the last ten years. Slide over to the next change in taxable valuation. So that's, that would be the valuation. Thank you. Very, very bottom, it says two point three three. This would be what you set your debt service levy based on. So this is the total taxable valuation. So that includes TIF and includes kind of what we call regular valuation. You slide over to the next section, and this is without ag or TIF. That one point eight six is what you've been setting your budget on. And, and really the, the hardest part on that is outside of a couple of years where you were close to four and a half or five percent on valuation, you've been one, one and a half or less, which makes kind of your annual budget much more difficult. So that one point eight six obviously lags both your actual valuation and your taxable. Because if you look at the ten years of your TIF valuation, the far column on the right at the bottom, you're at eight point six percent. So you see really the bulk of your growth is occurring within the TIF area. And, and now really just within the last year or so, you're to the point where your tax increment financing revenues are enough to really support your upcoming obligation. So gives you the option to have this dialogue as you go into this next fall. The key is you're talking about the budget now. And don't lose track that that decision really has to be made October, November before you certify TIF. So that's the only reason I wanted to bring this up.
So now that I know what you were talking about.
Yeah.
With the TIF, we talked about, we, we had built five-year budgets on the idea of our long-term historical growth, which was one point seven. And we've fallen the last two years with the point six and point seven amounts. We're well below those. And we knew we were gonna be below just because of the property tax bill that was done in 2013. But this is significantly below what we had budgeted for.
Yeah, especially the second year after. All the commercial rollback has already been in effect before this year. So now this is just another year of slowdown.
So what we're looking to do is, on a five-year basis, do we have the ability to use some TIF funds, look at releasing some TIF funds next fall to keep us on track with that five-year budget that we had done? Given that our property valuations have not grown the way we were anticipating.
And that's well within, I mean, that's well within reason to.
Yeah. And it's, it's well within our purview and, but the, as we do this, I guess part of what I still have to have a discussion with Travis about is the different projects that we've talked about doing. Where do we really stand on making sure that we're upholding all of our current commitments and not jeopardizing any of those before we really do bring forward a, a good dollar amount for you?
And, and really, all of those conversations look positive right now. There's, there's nothing that really gives us any cause of concern.
Say that again, Travis.
You're standing there with positive news?
Yeah. Last year I just brought you a bunch of refinance. Yeah. So I mean, all of those pieces look positive. There's nothing of concern right now with your project listing. But as that kind of gets fleshed out, you know, rates have stayed low. So that, that's gonna allow you to perhaps release a little bit more sooner, so. Anyway.
Wow.
But yeah, that is good news. So the, the next page then is your general obligation debt. Again, a, a lot of numbers. And also, all's I want to focus on is really the bottom right section on the, on that page. And to kind of outline, you know, the, the one issue that, that we're working with. And this goes back to that 2011 issue, which really also combined projects that you did in, in 2009. So the, the 2009 to 11 projects and the way that debt was structured. And you see that line kind of half the way down. You have a little bit, we'd call this kind of a plateau on your levy rate. What, what we'd like to see, you know, for your, your debt obligation is that if it's, if it's three, if three eighty is the debt service levy number that you need, then that each, over each of the next twelve to fifteen years or whatever amount of length of debt that you typically plan to have, that it drops by one twelfth or one fifteenth the next year with your existing debt. So that then you're able to roll on the next year's CIP without having the fluctuations in levy rate. So you see, you had that one-time adjustment, if you remember from Stephanie's conversations about adjusting the levy rates. You had an increase in your capital, so debt service levy of that about eighty cents that one year. You're now set up to be able to do that. And really looking at your five-year plan, there's the possibility you might even be able to drop that from that three eighty. But, but obviously you gotta be cautionary. You gotta continue to do a five-year rolling CIP and then evaluate it there. But, but based on where the, the five-year CIP, what needs to be funded out of debt service levy, it looks pretty good. The, the other option you would say on that is if you get to that point and you have that levy rate drop, and you might be able to give some relief to the sewer rates that, that have, that have been going up. So you might be able to convert some of that to property tax debt, so.
One of the things to look at with, if you look at the comparisons between communities that Stephanie presented earlier, both for the overall twenty-two communities and then the smaller group of seven or eight towns. And you look at where our primary driver of the, any differences between us and other communities, our size and property tax levies, it is in what we're doing on debt service. We, if we had more of a, the average community is more in that three-dollar property tax amount and we're at three eighty. We got moved into that three eighty range back in 2012 timeframe with the bonding that was done at that point. And it was, the way that was done with some backloaded debt, it committed us to having that level of debt to be able to do any, any ongoing projects between that 2012 timeframe and 2022, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up.
So our goal, our goal is we've brought forward a TIF, a schedule of property tax or debt service projects that we're gonna do with the property taxes based off of debt service is what can, what puts us in a position where long-term, even though we're keeping it level now, that we can transition back down towards that three-dollar amount. We haven't really had to worry too much yet about that because it still is five years out. But we will be getting into that point where we need to start seeing a transition.
Yeah, so the, the one thing I'll say cautionary with that is while we're working through that, there might be a few issues on the five-year capital improvement plan that don't look perfectly leveled debt service. We still gotta work through and unwind. But what we're trying to do is, is not stretch it out, not ever go to twenty years on anything capital. That's, you know, got these shorter, you know, the, street, street infrastructure. You know, don't, don't do twenty-year, twenty-year debt on street infrastructure. You're gonna be replacing it by the time your, your debt's paid off. So debt profile looks much better. You're gonna see on, on the next page, just a, a real quick illustration of, of where you're paying your debt obligations that aren't paid with your debt service levy. So you see a lot of that is coming from your tax increment financing area. But that in itself as well also kind of cuts back after that 2022 timeframe. Some of that does coincide with how your revenues will flow in. But you'll see a significant decrease when you get out to 2022 in, in your current TIF obligations. Sewer is, is still supporting right around four hundred and ninety thousand of existing general obligation debt. Your sales tax has got a, a portion of the 2011 bonds. And that, that other piece is related, that's the, is that Fund City? What is, what is that other piece? It's.
So Fund City is one of them.
Yeah, that, that's, that's one of the other pieces right now. So, so overall, you know, out of your total debt obligations that the city has, between principal and interest payments of about forty-two million.
The other, other part is B's debt.
Yes, correct. Yep. So between the forty-two million that you have of debt, that meaning principal and interest, total payments, about eighteen point six of that is coming from sources other than local property taxes. So, so that's, you know, obviously a, a plus that you have. There's a listing out of your TIF obligations on the next page. I'm not really intending to, to go into a lot of detail. I just want you to, to be aware of, of what your obligations look like. Again, focus kind of on the bottom right. You can see that you're currently utilizing about eighty-eight percent of your tax increment financing revenues this year. But you see that that plummets pretty quickly. And so that's what we're looking at. While we do know there are some future obligations coming on that, that may have a future tax increment financing implications. You know, it's not gonna be at the clip of, you know, staying at that ninety percent level, which will likely allow you to release some of that. But again, those are future discussions. That's a, that's a local decision. You know, that's not, ultimately, you'll get to the point where you've claimed all the revenues you're able to claim based on your obligations.
Down to zero in 2026.
Correct. Yep.
That's encouraging.
That is encouraging.
Until you put on the Division Street Roundabout, the Two Agency Street Projects, Dresser-Rand Cleanup, the.
Mayor Pro Tem said we were gonna end on a.
The Mount Pleasant Street Project.
But, but those, those projects you're putting on are less than the obligations you're taking off each year.
That's.
So you're, so you're still reducing your total outstanding.
And, and the other part of that is we have the, I mean, hopefully we still have the two point four million that comes in on the sale from the Manor Project. And that, that goes into the same pot of funds that we're, that, and that's part of where we kind of need to look and see, do we actually get that money coming in?
Yeah.
Before we can really make any final decisions anyway on TIF.
Which, which might ultimately put, push this decision off one more year. But it, it certainly does have implications. So this, this following, the last page then in the schedule, before you get into, to the debt limit. Just as your current CIP plan is pretty light this year, about one point three million total. And, and really you're looking at streets and an ambulance that's being funded out of general obligation bonds for, for debt service. So out of all of the capital projects that were listed, you know, the bulk of those are being funded kind of with your ongoing resources, your local option, sales tax. The one thing that'll add on top of this is there's still the potential for general obligation debt related to the, the flood mitigation work. So that's not included in here primarily because that's viewed to be self-supporting. In other words, it's not coming from your debt service levy. It's gonna be using the incremental sales tax revenues that you're gonna get from the state. So, so not a, not a levy driver, so to speak. Will have debt limit impacts, et cetera. But it's not gonna be something that impacts your, your overall levy as we're looking at it. So, so if you were to look at that far right column on this page, you're starting to see, and this is with valuation growth, kind of at your historical ten-year average. You can see that that three seventy or three eighty where you're at this year will continue to drop if you were to do no additional projects. You know, what we see over the next five years through 2022, you're probably still gonna have to be in that three eighty range. It's once you get outside to 2022, I mean, ultimately you're gonna have all your deficits erased in 2020. Your, your debt profile looks much better when you get to 2022 as well. So kind of just managing through this storm, the stuff that was started a few years ago. But it's, you know, it's looking a lot positive. You guys have stayed on track despite not getting the valuation growth that you really needed, you know? If you got one year of valuation growth at ten percent, you know, we'd be able to have a nice, a nice story about this. You know, we're, we're done. You know, you can accelerate your timelines. The problem is you haven't been able to accelerate the timelines because you haven't gotten a big boost in valuation growth, so. Overall debt limit structure, I guess maybe I didn't include the debt limit structure in this, in this packet. Debt limit, you're, you're still tracking towards your long-term goals. And I think you saw that in your budget, or it is in your budget documents, the full budget. So that, you know, those numbers look good as well. You're, you're meeting all those fiscal targets that you set with your policies a few years ago. As far as the other piece, that's just a timeline. You know, next week's meeting, you're gonna set a date for a hearing on the loan agreement as well as authorizing the pre-levy. Essentially what that does, since we haven't sold the bonds yet, in order to have a levy in the fiscal year for that debt service, you have to adopt a resolution that certifies those taxes. So that'll be a two-step process. May, March seventh will, you'll set the hearing date. And then March twenty-first, you'll hold the hearing and then approve the pre-levy. Now, the deadline for all of the, the debt service, the pre-levy stuff is March thirty-first. So it's, it's not the typical budget deadline of March fifteenth. So you, you do have till the thirty-first to get that done. From there, you know, after that's done, we'll really start the bonding process and look to access the market early May to, to be able to lock in rates. You know, right now, you, you still do have one refinancing that's kind of out there. That's, that's pretty close. So there's a possibility that that'll get thrown in, into this mix. But right now it's, it's not quite to the level where we would, you know, you'd see the strong recommendation of getting above your council target of five percent on advanced refundings. So that was the one that we looked at last year, kind of had to pull back on. Still looking at that same, same refunding. So I meant to be quick. Didn't take too long, hopefully. Any questions from the council?
Appreciate the information.
Come back with good news any day you like.
Yeah, I, it, it makes it easier, certainly. You guys didn't mind me that much when I was having to.
Chris and Becky, what do you think?
Becky didn't have any problems, but I would cry up my pillow every night.
Yeah, well, hey, both, both of those individuals certainly do deserve some kudos. They dealt through some tough decisions. So all the council members, current and former, I mean, you guys have all had a part in turning this around. So great job out of all of you.
You say that against it.
No, I've, I've said it every time I've been up here, that you guys had a tough situation. And you guys faced it head-on. You didn't shy away from it. You had to make tough decisions. And then something would go against you again, so you'd have to make more tough decisions. So, you know, it's, it's really a testament to your guys' ability to work together, come together and, and make tough decisions. So we need a whole lot more of that around this country on, on solving other fiscal issues.
Oh, yeah.
Just duplicate this model that you guys have done in Burlington. Great job. Good to see you all. If you guys have questions, filter them through Jim and we'll probably see you in May.
Thank you, Travis. Thanks, Travis. We certainly appreciate you. Thank you so much. Okay. Discussion items, treasurer's report.
Oh, boy.
Ellen, Erinette, she's watched Notre Dame win today, so, yeah.
Notre Dame game, didn't she?
Yes, yes. So here's the treasurer's report for January. Nothing really out of the ordinary, I don't think. Did anybody have any questions? Yeah, I mean, we have a deficit account in the Maslow Project Line item. And that's, we're gonna be doing a transfer for that. That project still hasn't wrapped quite up yet, so we're waiting on that one.
And the downtown facade is the same situation, right?
Yes, those, that's, money's outstanding that the owners still owe us. So we'll still be collecting on those, right, Charlie? So Charlie's in charge of collections there. So, yeah, and then, like I said, revenues and expenditures this month, there wasn't really anything out of the ordinary that was standing out. I know we're starting to see a little more activity at the golf course this month with that simulator. And so just a little pickup in some of that activity out there. So we see that with the credit card receipts out there and they're delivering beer and all that stuff. So that's good.
Couple of the deficits you have, the West Avenue Roundabout, again, that is a project that is grant reimbursed on a portion of it. And we will carry a deficit until we get to the point where we have final numbers and can certify the debt and pay it off with TIF funds. The annual Seal Coat Program is one that was covered. That was an unbudgeted project that happened because we got new road use tax funds. With the increases, we'll have to do it, at some point during the course of the year, we'll do a transfer from road use tax over to here to cover that deficit account.
Yes.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Steph.
Steph, pat yourself on the back, would you? All right, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Tell Erinette thank you, too.
Okay, Chelsea, you ready for action?
Hello, Chelsea Toll with the Greater Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau. I did give you all a copy of the written annual report. There is one page in there that's not updated yet. It's the hotel motel tax graphs. We don't have our final fiscal year 2015 numbers yet. So I can send you that information once it is updated. Typically, we get that payment March timeframe, so hopefully it'll be coming in soon. But I just wanted to give you our 2015 annual report. We had another great year. But I just wanted to give you our 2015 annual report. We had another great year, and so we've got exciting things to talk about. And as you know, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is dedicated to marketing and promoting the Greater Burlington community as a premier destination to both business and leisure travelers. So, you know, so far in 2016, we've been out distributing our 2016 Community Guides. Hopefully, you got a copy of that. If you didn't, I can get you one. If you know of an area in the community that needs some, I'd be happy to get those delivered out to them.
Yes, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay. We did attend a trade show in January. It was for the families, and we were able to talk to about 225 families at that trade show. And then we also attended the annual legislative session with the entire tourism industry and had the opportunity to talk to over 80 legislators that night. We worked with Miantown Pictures. Hopefully, you had the opportunity to see our travel episode that was out in January. They aired it once in January, once in February, all across the Midwest, and then eventually, that link will be available online, so we can promote it digitally as well. Turned out pretty neat. And then we're working on setting up our 2016 group tours coming to the area. We're implementing our marketing strategy for 2016 and, you know, continuing that wayfinding study. I do have an update for you here in a little bit as well. Some of you have seen these numbers. We got these last fall, but, you know, tourism industry numbers are a year behind for our economic impact numbers. And 2014, we did come in just under 132 million in visitor expenditures, and that was a 5.52% increase over 2013. So tourism saw a very strong year, and it supports over 1,000 jobs in the area. Visitors contribute 5.23 million in state taxes and 1.82 million in local taxes. And I believe it's because of tourism in Des Moines County, they save the residents about $380 a year on their tax rolls. And Des Moines County Tourism ranks 13th out of all 99 counties. Our hotel motel occupancy was strong throughout the year. Blue was 2015 numbers. You will see that we did have a couple drops first time in a number of years, but the overall average daily rate and revenue per room stayed high, so we had a 2.3% increase in hotel motel occupancy over 2014. And the state calculates their numbers in the top 10 counties in Iowa, and they only saw a .1% increase over 2014. So, and we know a lot of that increase for us is our construction projects in the area, but the CBB is still working hard to bring in those tourists and do our part in increasing that as well.
Good job.
The Port of Burlington Welcome Center saw really strong numbers this year, 14,764 visitors that counts visitors from all 50 states, including Washington DC and 34 countries. So we know that it's getting a lot of traffic through there, and we're showing the whole world what we're about. They hosted over 26 groups, and we had our first full year of our bicycle rental program. We had 21 bicycle rentals. We were very happy with that since it was our first year. We are in a partnership agreement with NICS Cycling and Fitness, and we just had to release that bid, so hopefully, we can make that new vendor selection here soon. We're also the primary ticket outlet for Venue Works and Civic Music, so that's continuing to increase our traffic down there at the Welcome Center.
Chelsea, can you just mention about the exchange thing you had with the, with the Nauvoo thing? How did that all work out?
Oh, yeah, we hosted the group of Nauvoo missionaries in Burlington for the day. We gave them a VIP tour. We hosted breakfast for them down there, had the ambassadors sing for them, and they just absolutely loved it. The missionaries rotate their placement every 18 months, and so we were working to, you know, kind of build our relationship with them because we found out on their days off, they like to come to Burlington. They love to shop, eat in our restaurants, and so anything we can do to show them what we have here, we can encourage them to keep coming back. I know one of the missionaries, she finished her placement and then got married and decided to stay, so, you know, we're encouraging...
I was invited to that wedding, but I do want to say, I got an email from one of the sisters that, that was saying how they were excited about working with you guys and how much stuff they felt like they were getting accomplished. So they're really, they're really enjoying the, the relationship that, that has been going on between us.
And we're enjoying it, too. They're a fun group. And, yes, and some of you were able to go with us. We got hosted down in Nauvoo as well, so we just kind of return that favor to them here in the community. These are some samples of the ads we placed in 2015. We try to have the same look and feel so that when visitors see it in the community, they can recognize us. We had 11 print placements within state regional magazines, guides, and newspapers. We ran two cable 32nd TV commercial campaigns in the Des Moines and Marshalltown markets. We had seven digital campaigns, search engine marketing, retargeting, and the same communities that the cable commercials were running, retargeting ads that I call them the stalker ads because they follow you as you continue on the internet. And then we ran campaigns on TripAdvisor as well.
Did, did you target Marshalltown to try to get my relatives down here?
Did it work?
Yeah, they did. We actually had Christmas down here this last year, the first time.
All 175 of them.
Did you count that as one of your group tours?
Becky Anderson had to open up her house to half of them. All the hotels were taken.
And then we measure the success of our campaigns based on the click-through rates and our ad inquiries, all of our print placements. We, they all have like a reader service listing, and so the person looking at it can send it back to the magazine. The magazine can let us know that they're interested. We sent out over 3,000 Community Guides based on those print ads of people that were interested in more information, and we had over 30,000 website page views, and a lot of those were our click-through rates. So we know it's just important for us to continue to have engaging ads, appealing. I'm a firm believer in having families and people so that you can imagine your family out here doing these things. For fiscal year 15, we were Regional Sports Authority District Community, so this means we received a $50,000 grant from the state, and we were able to partner with 10 different events. Three of those events took place in 2014, but those events brought in over 15,000 visitors and over $2.5 million estimated economic impact. Unfortunately, for fiscal year 16, we were not awarded that grant money, but I'm working with my sports commission, who is kind of oversees that, and we're looking at new ways to kind of increase our visibility out in the community. We're hoping to have a meeting here soon with local sports event organizers so that they know that we are a resource here for them, and that this money is here, and they can then apply for the grants as well. But one of our recipients for fiscal year 15 was the Monster Match. It continues to prove to be one of our largest sporting events in the community. And 2014 was when their event was held. They had 1,764 participants all the way from St. Louis, Omaha, Cedar Valley, Springfield. And then those participants brought over 3,500 spectators and officials, parents with them. They fill hotel rooms within 40 mile, 45 mile radius. They stay an average of two days in the community and just under $900,000 economic impact. The event coordinators did tell me that they've outgrown their space here in Greater Burlington. They had to turn away 15 to 20 teams this last year, and they anticipate having to turn away more teams next year. But I do know that they did grow, and they're using the space at Bracewell Stadium now as well, so.
Great.
The Convention and Visitors Bureau assisted 45 meetings, touring events, so this could be writing bid proposals, putting together welcome packets, doing group tours, anything within our realm. And that includes five American Queen Dockings and one Queen of the Mississippi Docking, and they brought in over 56,000 visitors to the area, just under 6 million estimated visitor spending. We found out that the average visitor in Greater Burlington spends about 1.62 days. So, you know, it's kind of our goal now to increase that and get them to stay here a little bit longer. But in 2015, an average of 580 hotel rooms were sold per night of our 768 in the community. The Convention and Visitors Bureau does offer community event funding. This is money set aside from our budget every year to events within the community. And then it started in 2014 before my time. They ran a one-time program of an event, an event, and that program took place in 2015. They were encouraged to create a new event for the community that took place in our non-peak season. So we had a disc golf tournament that took place in February last year and happened to be like the very last snowfall weekend, so their attendance was a little low, but they, you know, had a great time. They had fun. The participants enjoyed the area, so they're working to increase that, and the goal was to, you know, kind of turn it into a longstanding event there. But with the community event funding and inventing event, we distributed just under $20,000 that supported 11 events that brought in over 36,000 visitors. And one of those events that's very top-notch for us is the Mississippi Valley Calling Contest. They held it every February out at Pizzazz, and they bring over 2,000 participants, and they pack that conference center, and it's a duck calling contest. You know, you wouldn't think that that would bring in as many people as it does, but...
There were a lot of people. I want to check it out.
Yes. And our event here in Burlington is a national qualifier for multiple of the calls with, later and throughout the year. So we get a large national attendance here. Nine different states were represented, represented in these visitors stay an average of about 1.25 days. Our wayfinding study, our plan with the consultant has wrapped up. We have six different sign types pinpointed for 125 different locations within the community. And for new council members, this is a system of signs that we've developed with a consultant, and we are hoping to place these throughout the community to kind of replace the, everything that's different that's out there to provide that one unique unified look throughout Burlington and West Burlington. We have new logos designed, new gateways to replace the black Burlington, West Burlington gateways out there. We have visitor directional signs, and you'll see on the top right, the sign on the left that looks a little bit different color. And working with DOT, they had a few different regulations for us along Roosevelt, so we had to change our look there a little bit, and they did have some restrictions on what we could sign. So some things did have to get cut from our Roosevelt signs. But we have district signs to highlight the downtown district area and the shopping district, parking signs. I know Steve is very excited about having parking signs, our park signs, and then those kiosks right there in the middle, hoping to put those in high visitor pedestrian traffic areas. So one side is a map that highlights what's in that area, and then the other side is a lockable display case that Steve and I can, can control the content that goes in there, whether it's promoting events or fun facts or whatever we want to kind of highlight in there. Right now, we are waiting for kind of a price point. We don't know how much this is going to cost. And then once we have that, we'll start finding funding sources and hopefully, hopefully begin to implement signs later this year. We know it will have to be a phased process. We have awarded our 2016 community event fundings, and we did have to combine the sports events in with the regular events in the community because we did not receive the sports grant. We awarded $20,000 to 14 events that we hope to have them bring in over 100,000 visitors to the area.
What is a Dirty Hawk Dash?
That is a new event out at SEC, and it is one of those Tough Mudder 5K races. Yes, yep. Solcom 50 received money from us from the first time, and other events are longstanding events in the community. And our 2016 goals, you know, we want to keep moving forward and aggressive here. We hope to implement a destination fee with the hotels to kind of help support the indoor sports complex. We know having that in the community will just continue to increase the tourism and expand things on our non-peak season so we can have our hotels full all year round. Establishing the funding sources for the wayfinding signage, like I mentioned. Working on restructuring the sports commission to better coordinate the tournaments and grow participation. Just started the conversations with SEC and hoping to do some bids there to receive some of the NJCAA tournaments, so we're working on that. We want to enhance our fiscal year 17 sports grant application so that we can apply for that Regional Sports Authority District funding again from the state. Continuing to evaluate and implement strategies that are focused on the visitor experience. And we can get people here, but we want to continue to make sure that they have a great time while they're here, and what are some of those things that we can do to increase their time while they're here? And then a sixth goal that we've added is, we are in the beginning stages of hopefully doing a complete remodel down at the Port of Burlington Welcome Center. You know, it's a, from the 1980s, and it's been, it's, it's a little outdated down there. So we are hoping to do a complete remodel, renovation, new display cases, paint, and just kind of bring some new life down there, so.
Good.
So highlights of 2015 and a preview of 2016. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Good job, Chelsea. Thank you. All right. Well, I guess it's time for us to go into joint meeting with Planning Commission.
Can we talk about the appointments?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Ed Prill on the Low Rent Housing Agency. He's a local attorney, I understand. Is that correct?
Who is Ed? Oh, he's off.
And then in the Riverfront Advisory, Liz wanted to, to go on to that because she wanted to be involved in more activities, but she's already on the Economic Development Committee. So is it okay, council, to have somebody on two committees, I guess is the question?
I think the precedent's already been set. There's, we've got others that, that are on two.
We have a few. There aren't any formal rules that say it isn't, and that it isn't not, is not allowed. This is a spot where, from a staff perspective anyway, there isn't a significant issue. The Economic Development Committee met once last year, and I think that's part of why there's a desire to be on something that is a little bit more active as well. But if you wanted to see that to where, I guess if you wanted as a council to see not having a representation on multiple committees, you'd probably need to take some sort of a formal action to do that. You did, be, having that said, you, this came up as an issue last year. We, with having somebody who was on both Board of Adjustments and the Planning Commission, and that, that can create some issues when you have groups that don't, that are involved in fairly similar activities. And I, I don't know if that came up as a, a problem necessarily at any given time, but it certainly, there's a perception that you have someone in, in roles that should be, they're, they're designed to be very separate.
Wasn't that the only, wasn't that the only two that we had a problem with? Wasn't everything else, I thought we kind of went through?
There, there weren't any, isn't, wasn't anywhere else, nor, there isn't anywhere else where we have someone who's in conflicting roles or roles that could potentially lead to a conflict.
We do have some that are, we do have citizens that are on more than one committee, though.
Yes.
I say precedent's been set.
I don't have a problem with it either. I think she'll do a great job.
I agree.
I thought we had that discussion.
I appreciate you. Thank you, Mayor President. Okay, so are we ready to move forward then? Okay. All right, now it's time for the joint meeting with Planning Commission. Let me grab a glass of water real quick.
I need to take a short break here. Excuse me.
Do you want to, did you want to have the planning? Did you want to have the Planning Commission have chairs here? Even though the backs will be up, but then we can sort of move the mics around so that you can share mics? I didn't even realize that. I studied that last week. I expect that to be sold. I'd love, I am, I'd like to go see it, but that's just so odd.
I know.
It's out of our lives.
I sit right from the mayor's. Here's a lot of history.
Is there? It's, it's, it looks like it's immaculate.
It is. It's, and, but it's been well made. People's owners have liked it over $300,000.
Wow.
He paid 300,000, some 400,000. Put in 300,000.
Wow, I never asked him like 370 or something. That, yeah, that's going to be quite a deal for, I don't know how they, they're planning on using that.
Senator, pardon?
No. No.
That, that is one that's been really talked about as a church. That, that isn't one that's been really talked about as a church.
So, let's hit the flashlights. Tim, smack hit that head. You're hitting. A lie?
It was in my pocket.
No, no, when he wraps, he wraps up in a towel so that you can't see the marks, man. He's a slickster, man.
It's like my brother, or not my brother, my son stole a bad practice the other day and he flys his back.
Ouch.
Yeah.
That's my boy.
I picked him right in the side. He goes, why'd you do that? And I go, my hand. No, it's already.
It's an even odds, son. Even odds.
This little, this little flashlight is.
Yeah. Well, when you crawl into those stinky holes, you got to figure out what's going on.
It helps him see and he can combat crime while he's, so you got.
Shane, my daddy Jake, not believe we've met.
I don't think so.
No, I'm a Midwest one.
Well, nice to meet you.
New to the community, so.
Okay, well, everybody's gotta be there at some point. I'm sure you'll be, you'll be working. Doing all that good stuff, you're sure.
Nice to meet you.
Who's the good looking guy?
I don't have a problem with it. I just don't want to spend that.
Pretty, pretty boy Jim.
Pretty boy Jim?
Yeah.
So Jim looked like he was upset because of the street. We'll get COO over there. My son, he beat me up.
I told you, man, it all turns around, man. It all turns around, man.
A lot of funs.
That's what kids do. They wait till we get vulnerable and older, man.
No, he waits until I'm like sitting down and he comes and the flies are bombing.
My daddy Jake. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
All right. You're gonna keep us here all night, are you, Chris?
Eighty-two flies.
Because, Bob Fleming said.
I walked up here.
It's leap year, not daylight saving day. So you are.
That's what it is. It was one of the two.
I watched him on the internet.
Brian Brodeur?
Yeah. You're about, you're smiling a lot up here.
Brian Brodeur, Brian Brodeur.
Well, it's a good, it's a baseball player. If you don't like to see you smile. That's one thing he doesn't do here.
He smiles a lot. These other guys do, so.
He has that radiant glow.
Because he.
You got a glory now.
Quarter to.
Here we are.
Well, you get to talk about budget cuts, don't you?
Oh, that's right. Oh, yes.
But, but let me just tell you, it's this year and we've got to look at next year, next year, so.
Well, we're, we're still on the air, so.
Are we ready to get started here?
You betcha.
For the joint Planning Commission and Council?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I don't have anything to say.
So, the order of our presentation is first, I'll go over the purpose of this meeting, do an overview of what we've done in two thousand fifteen, and then give a list of the projects that we're looking to do in two thousand sixteen. So, chapter four, fourteen of the Iowa code establishes the authority of cities to implement zoning code. Council can only adopt zoning ordinances prepared by the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission is also in charge of the comprehensive plan as well as long-range plans. In addition to this, chapter twenty-two of our code requires an annual joint meeting between the City Planning Commission and the Council, and this is just a good idea, idea also to make sure we're on the same pages, the same page, and because the Planning Commission makes recommendations to you guys on how to do code changes like rezonings, vacation subdivisions. So, these are our two thousand fifteen rezonings that we recommended on. The first rezoning was the eleven-eleven North Fifth deal where neighbors in a neighborhood wanted to rezone the property of someone who lived next to them and the Planning Commission voted to recommend not rezoning that. The second one was a amendment to the Sunrise, Sunrise West Plan Unit Development. This was Mike Pearson's Plan Unit Development.
Sunrise West is something?
Sunrise West?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The Commissioner recommended to reject the amendment with five yes votes. This was for sidewalks. They wanted to not put sidewalks in as their Plan Unit Development Agreement specified. And there was also rezoning seven-two-four North Third Street from residential to commercial. Twenty-two-one, two-two-one Harrison Street was the furniture store. They wanted to rezone their parking lots so they could add an extra storage building. I'm sure most of you remember Bracewell Stadium's rezoning the stadium from multifamily residential to limited commercial. The seven-oh-five Maple Street was a more recent one. The Planning Commission voted to approve the Plan Unit Development there. And most recently is five-oh-nine Melrose Court rezoning from residential to commercial in order for Hy-Vee to be able to move their gas station. So, seven rezonings in total in two thousand fifteen.
Do you have vacancies on your, on your commission?
Yes, we'll, and I'll go over those, too.
Oh, okay.
We only had two subdivisions. The preliminary plat for seventh edition to Westbrook Estates, that was Mike Pearson's subdivision. I got the, that confused with the Westbrook Meadows. And we also had the preliminary plat Christine subdivision, which is, had just been approved by you and the final plat will be coming in the future. And both of these were voted to recommend approving these. We also do right-of-way vacations. Vacating the alley in the hundred block of North Main Street, this was for Millard's when they bought the, the buildings there so they could demolish it and then use the alley to just build one large building on that block. Eighty-twenty, eighty-two Columbia Street is a, is a business just down the road here where they wanted to put some more storage in the back of their, their property and it was a dead-end alley. One thousand Court Street was also a dead-end alley where a developer was looking to add some more units and needed the square footage. We just went over eighteen-hundred, eighteen-oh-two, eighteen-oh-four South Fifth Street. Six-twenty-seven, six-twenty-three acres, also pretty recent. And thirteen-twenty-five Iowa Street. And all of these were voted yes to recommend vacating the right-of-way. These are some of the larger code changes we did in two thousand fifteen. The signage code change, group living, daycare facilities, and the Plan Unit Development code change. The signage code change came about due to construction of a billboard at Bracewell Stadium. The Planning Commission evaluated a study of off-site signage codes in about eight or nine other communities around Iowa. Our previous code, which was applied when the sign went up at Bracewell, making it illegal, stated, "Billboards shall not be erected within fifty feet of any residential zone and shall be set back at least twenty-five feet from all right-of-way lines and shall not exceed twenty feet in height above grade." After doing a signage study and updating the code, it now reads, "Right-of-way setbacks can reduce to zero feet for billboards, billboards under twenty-five square feet and these billboards must also display the on-premise activity on fifty-one percent of their sign cabinet. This is why the sign at Bracewell Stadium reads, 'Bracewell Stadium Sponsored by Universal Group living code was also studied. This came about during the eleven-eleven North Fifth rezoning when staff discovered or noticed that the only restrictions on group living uses was the number of parking spaces on a lot. So after studying codes from other communities around Iowa, the same group of cities used to study the, the previous code change of signage. The group living code was changed to restrict density both by lots' square footage and by building's square footage. And we basically used Iowa City's restrictions for lot's square footage and building's square footage and then applied them here. The daycare facilities code change was initiated due to inquiries from businesses about constructing childcare centers as an accessory use for their employees. Think of like Case building a daycare center onsite so that their employees can bring their kids to work, leave them there where they go to their job and then pick them up when they leave. Childcare centers were only allowed in residential and limited commercial zones, meaning that the majority of businesses could not have onsite childcare. Code was changed to allow childcare centers in all zones, but only as an accessory use in an industrial zone where they also require a special use permit. And then, the Plan Unit Development Code was updated and this update was due to interest from developers in building affordable housing on infill lots. Infill lots are not on the edges of the city, but are in already developed areas. It's harder to build things on there because there's less space. And this code change aligned with comprehensive plan goals to remove code barriers to affordable housing and to consider code changes which encourage affordable housing development. We also added a new category of project appropriate for PUD application, which is infill affordable housing, projects over one acre in size. So, overall, we had nine Planning Commission meetings in two thousand fifteen. Seven rezonings were considered, two preliminary plats were considered, six right-of-way vacations considered, and eight code changes were considered. Moving on into two thousand sixteen. We had been, having meetings to go over items to pursue in two thousand sixteen. For the past two years, we've been pretty reactive as a Planning Commission where issues get brought up to us and then we deal with them. And we decided that this year, we want to look at our comprehensive plan and some of the goals laid out in the comprehensive plan and then be proactive about addressing those goals. So, these are the items we chose to address. Update land development ordinances for traditional neighborhood design. Evaluate trail connections to the Flint River Trail at Crepo and Danquitt Park. Implement the complete streets policy. Evaluate vacant building policy options. Prioritize wayfinding signage plan for implementation. Evaluate neighborhood planning ideas to assist neighborhood groups and plan for the flood mitigation infrastructure. To give you an overview of where these came from, they came from our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan lays out a set of goals and then also establishes an, an action plan with a timeline for when these goals should be completed. Housing is one of our goals. Housing Goal Three is all residents will have access to quality housing regardless of ability or socioeconomic status. And then, this corresponds to the action plan in Chapter Six of our comprehensive plan, which is update zoning and subdivision ordinances to remove barriers to affordable housing. And you see that target completion date is two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen. And so, all of the items we've chosen to pursue have target completion dates of either two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen or two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty. The first item is update land development ordinances for traditional neighborhood design. The action item in the comprehensive plan reads, "Update land development ordinances to require or at least allow components of traditional neighborhood design in consideration of existing neighborhood context. Design features to require and allow or allow the inclusion of compact mixed-use components, small lots, narrow front setbacks, deeper garage setbacks, walkable street patterns, narrow streets, and pedestrian amenities." So, we have a lot of neighborhoods in Burlington that were developed before current zoning code that may not meet the current zoning code setbacks. And we are proposing using GIS to investigate citywide, the neighborhood-wide average setbacks and lot coverages to see how many, if these don't match up. And if they don't match up, what percent of the city is not conforming? And then, present these results during both City Planning Commission meeting and City Council meeting. And then, from those results, consider updating the zoning code to reflect traditional Burlington development patterns if necessary. Evaluate trail connections for Flint River Trail to Crepo, Danquitt Park. The action item this is based off of is continue to develop trail systems and your connectivity of parks, including Flint River Trail. Oh, oops, slow. And Recplex. Flint River Trail has approximately one more mile left to build and funding has been secured for half that mile. That was the trail grant you discussed earlier. So, once Flint River Trail is completed, then we'll need to figure out how to get from the start of Flint River Trail at the port to Crepo and Danquitt Park. And the Planning Commission is proposing holding public meetings together, input from all groups interested in biking in the city to, and also with staff to decide on the best routes to get from point A to point B and then present those findings to the City Council. Implementing a complete streets policy. The action item for this is develop and adopt regulations that require a multimodal transportation impact analysis for proposed development on a case-by-case basis as determined by the city, impacts on traffic and street infrastructure, transit access and utilization, and biking, pedestrian connectivity should all be considered. The Planning Commission would study the complete streets policy implemented by the Council in two thousand fifteen. Hold public meetings and work with staff to develop a complete streets plan that will identify specific quarters that should incorporate complete streets elements. In addition, the Planning Commission would work with city staff to update city code pertaining to development to include complete streets measures and then present the findings to Council and recommend code changes. So, you did adopt a complete streets policy, but it hasn't been integrated with the normal development procedures we have in the city where if something, a new project is being developed, there's no method yet for applying complete streets policies there. So, the Planning Commission would work to develop a way to do that.
If I could add to that, when you get to the point of discussing that, it was discussed by the Council that the financial impact of doing this had to be considered as well when, when doing the complete streets. Keep that in mind.
We talked about that aspect.
Good.
Did we meet for too long and I decided to shut off?
Chris, he broke it.
I think there's a, there's a hand there, Charlie.
Told you it was eighty-two flights.
Yeah, we're about one-tenth of the way through this. Evaluate vacant building policy options. The action item in the comprehensive plan corresponding to this is adopt a vacant building ordinance to better manage and maintain the city's vacant building stock. This program should support the cost of inspections and maintenance enforcement and it should both prevent and help pay for emergency actions to protect public safety, including demolition. The Planning Commission would study ways to measure and document the scope and impact of vacant buildings in the city of Burlington, as well as studying the various tools available to the city for managing and mitigating vacant buildings and then develop a best practices toolkit for dealing with vacant buildings and then present the results to Council. Prioritize wayfinding signage plan for implementation. Oh, waiting for it to update.
It's Brian's fault.
It's mine.
Well, I guess while we're on the, oh, there it goes. So, the action item this corresponds to is construct and maintain interpretive signage at key attraction locations to further promote the assets of the community. What the Planning Commission would do here is study the forthcoming wayfinding signage plan, hold public meetings, and meet with staff to prioritize wayfinding signage implementation stages and then present these findings and recommendations to the Council. Chelsea mentioned that the wayfinding study would be phased and the Planning Commission would help determine which phase would go first and where to put the first wave of signs. Evaluate neighborhood planning ideas to assist neighborhood groups. This corresponds to the action item of provide resources to neighborhood associations to address community issues, including housing, safety, and appearance. The Planning Commission would hold meetings with existing neighborhood groups to determine common interests and issues among groups and meet with staff to discuss ways in which the city can assist neighborhood groups. And with this information, we would develop a guide to assist new neighborhood groups in forming and to assist existing neighborhood groups with common issues and then present these results to the City Council. The last item is plan for flood mitigation infrastructure, which corresponds to implement mitigation strategies outlined on the Des Moines County Disaster Mitigation Plan. The Planning Commission would assist the city along with our consultants in gathering public input on the placement and design of flood mitigation infrastructure. They would assist the city and consultants in forming subcommittees responsible for reviewing plans and then they would review any plans and/or proposals developed by selected consultants on the placement and design of flood infrastructure before making a recommendation to Council. We do have one person here in the audience who would also like to make another recommendation of something to look at in this year.
Kind of realized there was an opportunity tonight with the Planning Commission and Council meeting. An item that I had concern with is what is the urban revitalization area? And I would like the Council and Planning Commission to take a look at creating some kind of policy that discusses the right mix of housing within this area. Obviously, we know that a proposed project came up doing seventy-five low-income housing units and I think that now would be a good time for the Planning Commission to create some policy that focuses on the right kind of mix and the right percentage of, of this type of housing that we would want to see within the downtown and within that revitalization area, mainly because these areas are blighted. I think there needs to be some serious consideration about the mix of housing that we allow to be developed in the future. Obviously, within our comprehensive plan, we established, you know, kind of. Obviously, within our comprehensive plan, we established, you know, kind of moving away from large concentrated developments and dispersing it throughout the community. So it's my hope that we can kind of encourage some discussion and hopefully some language to take place within that urban, mainly the urban revitalization area to now, you know, maybe determine what type of development we really want to see. I think I worked hard with a lot of people to get that passed. I never would have known that alone would allow somebody to be able to just come in and create a development really without any consent of the community. So that's really it. I just would hope that that could be possibly added to the future projects for the planning commission. Thank you.
That's a good point made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all my slides.
Is that it? You must have another presentation to do somewhere else, don't I?
Next, yeah, he does.
Yeah. Okay.
No, you, you probably want to go with streets, but I think everything that we've talked about will buy for the budget, you know, we won't make that, that was, you know, that we don't want to put anything more out there. That's a burden to the taxpayers. Ultimately, you guys got a final saying if you're bringing something that's going to be a high dollar value, we already know what you're gonna say.
I do like the point that, I can't even think, what's my friend's name? Yeah, I do like the point that he made, and I, I like the fact that there's some people on, on the board that I feel would really take that part of it serious, because I don't think, I, I just want to say, make this perfectly clear from my standpoint. I don't think that building just to be building, or, you know, having a new building, or having a new development just to say that we can have one, or just to say that there's room to put one there, that doesn't mean that that means it's okay for us to do that. And I, I know I don't have to talk to you, 'cause I already know where you stand on that, but I just, I would just reiterate that. I think those are important things that we need to think about, because what has happened in other communities, is they've gotten opportunities, and they went ahead and went, you know, whole, whole hog in, and down the road, you wait five to seven years, and the investments that they made turned into the exact same thing that they're trying to get away from. So I, I would hate for us to, for that to happen to us, and I, I wouldn't like to see us waste any time or money. So I just think that was a good point to make, and I would need to be mindful of. That's, that's all I really have to say.
Becky, comment on that, too. I think it's helpful to have that policy, because it's probably from the planning commission's perspective, unless the code prohibits it, we really don't have.
Does it give you the ground?
We don't have, we gotta have some cover.
And I understand that, right.
And you guys, as the council, can override it anytime you want, but we, we have a little bit, I feel like we have a narrower line to follow. And, and, and there, there are things when we get feedback from constituents and other folks, and at the meeting, we have to take into account, we, we need cover, we need policy on that, so.
I would agree, I, I hear you.
Yeah, I want to congratulate Charlie, because I think, I feel like in this last year particularly, and I've been on the, the planning commission for a number of years, we've been more on a proactive posture instead of a reactive, and I really appreciate that, so.
That's good. Let's give Charlie a golf clap on that. Not too much, that's enough. Not too much, just, just enough. But, but very true, very true.
No, I appreciate, too, that we're looking at the comprehensive plan and implementing things that are in the plan. We spent all that money to do that, and so it ought to be doing something for us.
Well said.
So, thank you, you guys. And, and just, I've said this before at council meetings, I tend to side with you, whatever you guys decide you put forth. I mean, occasionally, I mean, the, one or two, one or two times, but mostly, I like to go along with what you have to say, because I, it's important. I feel it's important.
And I feel like it's, we're blessed that we've got a good board of people, so, I mean, that, that helps out a lot more to give us, give us those confidence. But again, I, I do agree, you guys need some cover. Let's get some ground rules, you know, and so that way, we kind of get a little bit more on the same page, but.
I, I take a little different look at it. I'm gonna challenge you at every point, but hopefully they're gonna do the same thing to us. And that's, that's where we end up with the, with the very best, is when we're, when we're all thinking in all directions and, and then come together.
Well, we challenge the people that come in front of us, too, you know, sort of like the, the four properties that were brought to you guys today. They know what they're getting into, they know what they can and can't do, you know, we've sort of, we were asking the same thing, why?
Why, yeah.
You know, but then at the end of the day, you have to ask, why not? You know, if they want it, and they're willing to pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars for piece of land that really they can't do anything with, but that's something that they want. And so, I mean, we, we had discussions about it, going back to it, just like you had the questions here tonight, so, yeah. But we couldn't answer, we couldn't really say no.
Yeah, a little, I don't, I won't say anymore than, it's not what they, what it's gonna do for us, it's what it's going to do to us.
Yeah. I understand that point, too, where sometimes you just, there's always that unknown.
Becky Anderson.
I'm only into one, I shouldn't be.
What do you say, don't you start up me tonight?
I'm glad to be on it, I, I, you know, I, I think there's a lot of things here, and I like the way it's going to proactive, you know, I know what it'd be a part of that.
So all these things on this list, none of this jumps out to you as just being crazy? So if we talk about this and then present it to you later, you're not gonna say, where is this coming from, or this isn't something I want to be done?
That's sort of challenging.
No more than usual.
Like I said, it fits in with what your comprehensive plan, I'm, I'm glad that we're looking at it and, and coming up with ideas, I, I, that's good.
Have you? I was gonna ask if you guys have ever done, you know, proactive things like this before, I guess in the past, or is this like a first?
Well, I've just been on this board, and I haven't been on too long, I'm on the other side of the table for a while, but, no, I, I think, you know, looking at it for us, you have to, because if you're two steps behind, you're always playing catch-up. You know, trying to, like, for instance, is trying to tie in Flint River Trails to our park system is huge, because right now, there is no, there is an avenue, yes, but then what kind of safe avenue is there? And I look at other communities that have a trail system, and they're successful. And yes, when I was on the council, I'd speak at Fairfield a lot, because that's where I grew up, we had a trail system that goes all the way around. They actually, they, they have races on those trail systems, they have, you know, five Ks, ten Ks, they bring in people from the outside in other communities just to ride their trail system. And so that's a part of economic development, you know, because you have to tie all that together. So it is, we're looking ahead, because once that mile gets finished, how are we gonna tie everything together?
Right, right.
Well, and, and I guess one thing I would say is that the time that was spent to put the comprehensive plan together and the goals that were set, those goals need to be addressed and worked towards, and I really.
That's not changed for the twenty-plus years that I've been involved with the city council, but the first, one of the first actions I took was adopting the nineteen ninety-seven comprehensive plan. And in five years' time, we had completed more than ninety percent of the comprehensive plan's goals. And we, we sat down and redone it, and then it was made, the decision was made, while I was mayor, that we were going to go through each section of the comprehensive plan on an annual basis, not every section, but we'd take one plan, the streets plan, the parks plan, and et cetera, and, and update it on an, on an annual basis. I don't know what happened after I left, but they, it, we, but we did get to the point of adopting a new comprehensive, comprehensive plan, and it was, it, it, it was involved in getting it done, and it was, the public was involved, and it was done the right way, so. And it's, and we should, they should, the comprehensive plan should be our bible, it should be the way that, the way that we do things. It's, and when, when we quit doing them, doing it that way, then we need to, we do, rewrite the bible.
Did you say you were gonna address, you had vacancies on the board?
Not anymore, Becky filled our last vacancy.
Okay.
We're just not all here.
Figuratively or literally?
One of the items that's on there has to do with flood protection. What steps are gonna happen here in the near future, Charlie?
There will be a steering committee formed in, in the first week of April to have an intense series of meetings, and something that needs to be discussed with you is, you would need to designate that steering committee in one of your upcoming meetings. And then any plans or any input developed by them will then be presented to the planning commission, who will first review it, and then it will be presented to you with their comments.
I didn't hear what he said.
We're gonna be starting a process here to, with, I mean, we had the presentation a year ago on what we'd look for, for steps and work to be done with the overall flood protections process. Well, we now need to get where we have, as we do the different phases and the design work that goes into it, what is it gonna actually look like, what modifications do we want to have? Because that's a pretty broad, just general overview of things. We need to now get to where you have decent details for each of the sections. And so in April, they'll put together a task force that will start looking at this stuff and bring back recommendations to planning and zoning, and then to you as a council.
I would, I would encourage you to, Chris, Becky, Patty, keep asking if they've involved the Riverfront, or Riverfront Committee on this, because we've, we've made promises that they would be involved in this whole election program. I, I don't think we can ask them enough if they have an opinion or.
You guys are pretty important, sounds to me, like.
You're the important one, John.
It's always.
But you know what, I'm not as far as I thought.
That's right, as long as we understand that, you got that, right? Mr. Prudential.
Is there some additional things? I don't want to close this off, but I do have a couple of things when you get done with this kind of combined discussion, so.
Good.
Only thing I'll say again is, you know, we, we want to help you guys out just as much as we can, because, you know, when I was on your, on the council, we always looked at boards and sort of being an extension and, and helping sort of set some policies and follow through with them, too. So, you know, if you ever have any questions, concerns, you can always call me or email me, or, I try to say the best to say to you.
And we appreciate that, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Part of it is, too, that with the council, if there's, and this is the planning commission's goals, but if there's issues or items you see throughout the year, and you want studies or reports done that rely on the planning commission, don't, and this is something they've brought forward to you, but if there's items you want more detail on to use them as well in their role, so.
You bet.
That's good, Eric.
That makes sense.
City manager.
I get to be on the radio this week.
Thank you, guys.
Governor Branstad, just a reminder, will be here on Thursday morning, eight thirty to eleven thirty. We'll begin up at the chamber, chambers offices, have a presentation. The topic for the morning is really about water quality issues and it, around the proposal that have been put, put forward for.
Flood mitigation?
For, no, this, well, the water qualities, he's looked at water quality funding, the governor put forward a proposal for using a portion of, doing an extension of the state sales tax that the schools use, and using a portion of the growth that's in that over a twenty-year timeframe or thirty-year timeframe towards water quality projects. It's fairly broad in what their, what his proposal is. The focus for the Thursday morning meeting is to be able to talk about essentially what are, what are our water quality issues, and where would that fit in respect to the, his proposed funding stream? That's not necessarily a magic pill to solve all our issues, but it is something that's been put out there that's a, a discussion point for how do we address the state's, well, really the nation's, water quality issues that are really being, needing to be, there's been a higher degree of intensity put onto focusing on them. The EPA has really pushed on, at, from a federal level, that we focus on water quality. As a result, D N R has put a larger focus on it. It's one of the things, from our own infrastructure, one of the upcoming standards that will be in our new sewer permit is starting to evaluate how much nitrates and phosphates are in our effluent from the wastewater treatment plant. Well, that's part of that water quality. How do we fund, if we're gonna say that we need to do something to correct some of the issues with that effluent, how do we fund it? Cities are not the only component of water quality issues in the state. There are a lot of different moving components, and it's a very contentious issue. The, again, the point for Thursday is to be able to talk about a proposal that he's brought forward, and then where would, where, is there really an identified need for it? Yeah, there is, but I, my perspective, I want to stay out of the arguments between different entities receiving funds, but we do have an identified need, and this is something that's been brought forward as a topic of discussion. I really don't know exactly how all of the morning will go. What I do know is, is that West Burlington will make a presentation about what they're doing with, meeting water quality needs, will do a presentation.
Still meeting at the same place?
Still meeting up at the chamber. I know that we'll have a, we're supposed to have a representative from the League of Cities as well. I don't know if he'll get into talking about some of the efforts that they've undertaken on a statewide basis to try to coordinate between different entities, including Farm Bureau, et cetera.
You don't know how much they're gonna talk about, or if they're gonna talk about it at all?
I don't know if they will or not. I, I just, that's not my bailiwick to get into.
I just, I don't figure what they have to say.
And I'm assuming that the governor will, to some extent, address this issue as well in, in some remarks. They also wanted to take the time to tour some of our infrastructure, tentatively this wastewater treatment plant, and then West Burlington's as well, their wastewater treatment plant. So we're looking at a morning where we can have an initial meeting up at the chamber and then do a little bit of a tour. And I hate having to try to plan something like that. That was put up, that was something that got arranged through the, the League of Cities with the governor. He'd had an opening occur this, this month, or this Thursday, so we're trying to fill it. Manor site is still, we were hoping to have, see that potentially closed last week. They ended up having to, after the, they did the phase one environmental, they had, had to go through an additional step, a phase two environmental. When we spoke with them last Monday, they were looking at tentatively about two weeks to complete that. Don't see anything there that should be a, a, any type of a showstopper for what they're having to do, but it is an additional step that they had to complete before they could move forward with closure on this.
There's the gas fumes from the service.
There's some gas fumes that, that are on the northwest corner of that lot, or that site.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a new standard that wasn't there, even when Dial was looking at this, it wasn't a standard that was in place.
Wow.
U S Bank, one, gas, gas vapors from the Circle K gas station is impacting just south of Walgreens onto that property, and we just don't know the extent. There's a new study that's required to, to try to see what sort of gas, gas vapors there are underground, and then there's an entrainment process that they can do if there are there.
Let's wrap this up before they come out with another study, boys.
Yep. U S Bank building, we just signed paperwork to get funding from the state to do an asbestos study. We had to have that occur before we could do the asbestos study. So we're still in the process of doing an evaluation of the facility. Don't anticipate we'll find anything that's, for us, a showstopper either, but maybe something that we'll have to address as we go through the process. But we are still moving forward, and we'll have to continue as time goes on. And I'll just point out, another thing that we're gonna have to do over the next month's year process is do an evaluation of our sewer and stormwater rate, and look at what, how they're currently structured, and see if we shouldn't do some changing to the overall structure. Not that we need to change how much money we raise, but, but how we collect it. So we're gonna be doing some evaluations of that. It, it'll be a, a process that'll get drug out over a period of time. The reason that we're gonna, we're gonna start looking at that now, the water department was in the process of doing a rate study, and since they were in it, I thought it made sense, this is the time to go ahead and do all of them. And that's it for what I had. It's been a long night.
See, what do you have, any closing comments before we ready to ramp it up?
I had two meetings I went to last week, Regional Planning, their audit is in our reader file, if you've seen that. Most audits are kind of boring, but.
Yes.
Anyway, they're in good, good shape. They're looking, their focus right now, they're trying to look at putting together a, a place for their buses. Right now, they just sit out there in the weather, so that's one of their focuses. And then next day I went to the, Bob let me go to the Burlington V's meeting. They're getting ready, ready to open their season, that's their exciting thing there.
Good deal, good deal, another season.
Yeah. Thanks.
I think at this time.
Yep.
Councilman?
Okay.
Mr. Tussle?
Uh, Councilwoman Wilson.
Good.
Okay, well, we're all good tonight.
Thanks, guys.
I move that we adjourn at this time.
Then it's a wrap.